Eleven, the roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
And Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
We do, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the matters that are reflected on the open session agenda. Of those matters that took reportable action as to Savon Bryan versus City of Newport Beach, Everest National Insurance Company versus Abinader, and Luigi Abinader versus State of California. As to those three matters, the council voted seven to zero to authorize the defense of those matters. No further reportable action was taken.
Thank you very much. I'd like everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Curry, and then I will give the invocation.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we are occasionally tempted to think that some days are less important than others, as though we had a grasp on the big scheme of things and understood the impact that a single day can have on the tapestry of our lives, and yet we don't. The truth of the matter is, no day is more important than today, the one we're in, for it is only in this day that we can live. We cannot see tomorrow; we see but dimly the path we take. Darkness hangs about us and mystery meets us at every turn. Help us therefore not to labor under the delusion that this is not the critical hour, for it may be, and if it is, we wish to be ready lest you visit us unawares. We pray for strength for our burdens, wisdom for our responsibilities, insight for our times, and faith enough for generational vision as we plan for the future of our city. Your word declares that, in his heart, a man plans his course, but the Lord directs his steps. So we humbly submit to the circumstances we currently face, trusting that you will direct us to a better future. Grant us then courage, still our tongues against weak complaining, and steel our hearts against our fears. Oh Lord, make us strong. Amen. I believe we have no presentations this evening. Is that correct? Therefore, we're ready for the notice to the public.
The City provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for City Council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
All right. This evening we'll start with Councilmember Hill.
No items.
Councilmember Rozansky?
None, thank you.
And Mayor Protem Gardner?
The Harbor Commission meets tomorrow night, Wednesday, at 6:30 in this room, and one of the topics of discussion is going to be the visioning of the harbor in terms of what types of boats, what size of boats and piers and that sort of thing, what kind of overhangs should be permitted in various areas. And they'll be looking at Mariners Mile and Councilman Sallis. Do you remember the other area they were going to be looking at?
Rhine Channel.
Yeah, Rhine Channel. So if that's of interest, please come out and make your comments.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I wanted to highlight a project that we're going to be beginning shortly, the widening of the Jamboree Bridge, and that connects Bristol South with Bristol North. And as you drive down Jamboree, you can see currently a bridge being retrofitted, and that's the one that goes over San Diego Creek. So this is up the road about a mile. And the City's been working on this project since 2004, and that really speaks to the difficulty and the complexity of getting a bridge approved in California. We've had a multitude of agencies to go through, Caltrans, we've had environmental documents, and we've been assembling funds for a number of years, including Measure M Grant. And I've worked with our staff on a number of the agency issues, and they really deserve our heartfelt thanks. They have been, we have been thrown every possible obstacle, and yet we continue to persevere, and we're now going to be beginning this project. And one other note, and that is that in that 2004 timeframe, what was actually being considered was a grade separation. So we've taken a flyover off the table, which probably would not have been very popular in our community. And additionally, we also have some funds from the City of Irvine in this project, and that was from a lawsuit that was settled a couple of years ago. So with all the complexities with the agencies, we also had to deal with a lawsuit. So thank you very much, and we look forward to that project beginning in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry?
Yes, Councilmember Hill and City Manager Kiff and myself had the opportunity to do the backstage tour at John Wayne Airport and watch the new terminal under construction. It's due to open in November. But perhaps more impressive was the opportunity to sit and watch the room where they can track previous and past flights. It's actually the complaint center. So if you call in regarding a plane that you believe has strayed out of its typical pattern over your house, it was too loud, they have the ability, based on your complaint and the time of day, to go back and find that specific aircraft and again, and plot it on a map, find the actual route it flew, and show the noise measurements from the various measuring points along the route. It's a very impressive system designed to prevent aircraft noise and to prevent aircraft from deviating from the appropriate routes. So if you do have issues with the airport and with a stray airplane, I encourage you to call John Wayne and register your complaint, and let them show you the analysis that they're able to do relative to that complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sallis?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. I had a few announcements. First, in the continuation of the Meet the Mayor series, my next session will be on Saturday, March 19th, at the Friends Room of the Public Library, 9:00 AM to 10:30. And I'm hoping that I'll cover for District Five residents. Any thoughts or questions or concerns that they might have? And then tomorrow evening, our City Manager will be at Speak Up Newport, which is at the Newport Beach Yacht Club, right at the entrance to Balboa Island. That begins at 5:30 PM, and he will be speaking on the Committee Reorganization Agenda item, I guess, that we're going to be talking about this evening at our council. So I'd recommend that anyone with an interest come listen to Superman talk about committee reorganization. And then just by way of things that have happened in the last couple of weeks, with Councilmember Rozansky, I was able to participate in the Youth Government Day on March the 3rd. Steve really is the person that pulls the laboring oar on that, as he has for many years, and I think it's a great thing that you do for the youth of our community. And then Steve and I also participated in a John Wayne Airport tour on a different day, and that was very interesting, I agree. And lastly, Airport Working Group had their annual meeting. I was joined by Councilmembers Curry, Rozansky, and Hill for that, and Councilmember Daigle. And I guess we all were. Yeah? I didn't, you weren't there? Okay, all right. Except for Councilmember Sallis.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yes. Who I know regards the airport issues as extremely important. And so with that, then, we are done with announcements, and we are ready for Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk?
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items one through 10, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council's staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss the consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the box.
Very good. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, in addition to the Jamboree Bridge project, I also want to draw attention to a couple of other infrastructure projects, and that is we're going to be repairing any minor defects in the series of bridges that go along beneath a canyon road. And the reason that we do so much infrastructure improvement in that part of the city is because it's really a crossroads with Newport and Irvine and the toll roads coming in. And then also, there's a project for our slurry work this year is up in the airport business area and kind of coming down towards Jamboree. So, thank you. Is it slurry or slurry?
Slurry.
Slurry, okay.
But no items to pull?
No items.
All right. Councilmember Curry?
No items to pull.
And Councilmember Sallis?
No items.
Councilmember Hill?
No items.
Councilmember Rozansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Correction to the minutes on page 68 in the fourth paragraph. It says Dan Persol, Bike Safety Committee. He actually was speaking about the Bike Safety Committee, but he's not a member of the committee.
And then I do not have any items to pull, but I wanted to just comment on item number six, which is the pavement rehabilitation project at the east end of Lido Isle. This completes the repaving of all of the interior streets for Lido Isle. It's a great project, and I'm pleased to see that that's proceeding. And also very pleased to note that the cost is 19% below the engineer's estimate and at a savings of $130,000 or more. So, great job with that, and very happy that that's going forward for our residents on Lido Isle. And with that, do we have any members of the public that wish to pull Consent Calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert Hawkins, Newport Beach, would like to pull D7. Thank you.
Okay.
Tim Mosher, number one and number four.
Is there anyone else that wishes to pull a Consent Calendar item? Seeing none, then, may I have a motion? Whoops, excuse me. We need to read the Consent Calendar items by title and number, I guess.
Once you have the motion, state the motion, we'll read, then you'll vote on the motion if that's acceptable to you, Mr. Mayor.
That certainly is. May I have a motion?
Yes, I move Consent Calendar Items One through 10 with the exception of one, four, and seven.
Second.
For item three, ordinance number 2011-8, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, approving Plan Community Development Plan Amendment Number PD 2007-006 for PA 2007-213. Item four was pulled, and so that's all there is on the consent.
Okay. And with that, do we have any further discussion? Please vote. All right. So items that have been pulled, item number one. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, my name is Jim Mosher. In the February 22nd regular meeting minutes, I noticed it says that Councilman Curry, as listed, is having abstained from the vote on item Roman number 12A2, which is the waiving of the reading of the full ordinance and resolutions. I believe that's a typo, and he actually was abstaining from the vote on item number one.
Good catch. That's correct.
However, had he abstained from item two, that would be a good test case of a new rule on vote counting, which I believe was introduced into Policy A10 at your last meeting. That is a rule which doesn't wash with me. This is something I have not spoken about before, and I don't think will wash with most citizens of the city. It's a new rule that says abstentions, instead of counting as non-votes, as they do in Robert's Rules of Order and all other known parliamentary procedures, will in Newport Beach now be counted with the majority vote. In this particular case, our charter requires the waiving of the reading of the full text of the ordinances and resolutions to be done by unanimous vote of all the councilmen present. I don't think that's a difficult rule to understand. Tonight, we have seven council people. The charter says that you need seven yes votes. Under this new rule, a single yes vote filled in with six abstentions would be the same thing. That doesn't sound correct to me. More importantly, a handbook that used to be available in the lobby quotes the city charter as saying that the affirmative vote of at least four members of the City Council is required for the enactment of ordinances or resolutions. I take that to mean four people pushing the button that lights up the green light up there on your scoreboard. The new rule would mean just one or two and enough abstentions to fill in the remaining four, or bring it up to four would be enough. That doesn't sound right to me, and I don't think you can change the intent of the charter by enacting a new policy. Thank you.
I would note, Mr. Mosher is correct. I did abstain on item one in the last meeting.
So we will reflect the correction?
And the correction that I made.
Do I have any other members of the public that wish to comment on that item? Any council conversation beyond that? Please vote.
Do we make a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number four. Mr. Mosher?
Again, my name is Tim Mosher. As I understand of the staff report for this item, I guess the title has not been read yet, is a resolution supporting a Water Smart Program Grant. As I understand of the staff says that you need to pass this resolution to obtain a federal grant, and if successful, it will commit our city to spending at least $700,000 of our own taxpayer money that might be otherwise used for some other water quality-related matter. What bothers me about this is that the resolution says that the council has reviewed and supports the Water Smart Grant proposal, but I don't see the actual proposal anywhere attached to the staff report, so I don't quite know what it is, what proposal or program is being approved. Committing $700,000 may seem like a small amount to you, but according to item five on the agenda, it's as much as the entire annual budget for the slurry ceiling that was just mentioned, and it's money that might possibly produce more effect if it was spent directly on some other water quality program. Now, it's quite possible that this is the best use of the money, but it bothers me when our elected officials appear to be endorsing something on our behalf without knowing exactly what it is that they're endorsing. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right. Bring it back to council for comment.
Move the action.
All right. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Let me read the title of the resolution, please. Resolution number 2011 dash, and correction to the agenda, it should be dash 25, not 19. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant proposal for funding under the United States Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Grant Program. The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Item number seven.
Just a moment. I do think, though, that is a good point. Again, we need to be careful when we read these things, that we keep in mind that others who have not been involved, say, in the water quality program, may be totally unaware of what it is, and maybe include a paragraph more of explanation so that the public is able to follow what we're doing.
Mr. Hawkins?
In connection with number seven, that is the Jamboree Bridge widening over the 73, and Councilmember Daigle indicated that as a result of a lawsuit with City of Irvine, and actually, we were the plaintiffs in that lawsuit, we received substantial monies for traffic mitigation. But no one, and it's not in the staff report, no one has recognized that, and I thought the EQAC and the committee issues were on this agenda, but it does not look like it. EQAC commented on the Sholi Project in 2003, 2004, and as a result of those comments, the city received $400,000 in traffic mitigation that was supposed to go to this project. So I just want the staff to confirm that the city did receive those funds, and it is targeted for that widening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can we confirm that?
Yes, that's right. Steve, if you want to...
Okay.
I'd just make a note for Mr. Hawkins. Actually, the committee item is on the agenda. It's item S15.
Move the item.
Second.
Oh, second, I thought you were...
Okay. All right. Please vote.
Did you have to read that one?
Councilmember Rozansky, there's no resolution of ordinance. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So, we are done with the Consent Calendar. It's time for oral reports from City Council members on committee activities.
Public comments.
Excuse me, public comments.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Hen and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner, and I know I'm a thorn in your side on the Ronald Reagan statue, but I was out of town two weeks ago when you had this meeting, and I have a few things I'd like to say about it. As you know, and those of you who read my emails, that I do not favor this statue because I think it does tend to divide our community. I see a lot of people saying that they would feel left out or not being welcomed in our city, but I do think we're probably past that point, that it probably is going to happen. I do accept that. I do have some concerns about whether it was ethical or illegal to allow the donors to tax deduct their donations to the city for something that was designated as a political issue, in my opinion, anyway. So I think it would be helpful if the City Attorney would make some comments on that. I'm also wanting to say that I'm grateful to the council for agreeing to not have this statue placed at the New City Hall. I think that was a major step, and I do appreciate that. But if there is to be a statue, and I acknowledge that probably is the case, I am very much opposed to placing it at Castaways Park. We already have a statue at Castaways Park that has intruded greatly on the beauty and peace of that park that we used to enjoy. It's still a lovely park, but there's something about a statue of a soldier with their guns ready that is very startling as you come to that location. Whereas I don't want to dishonor the purpose of the statue, I think it does tend to dishonor that statue by having it in that location, when, what in my opinion, an appropriate place would have been the American Legion property. So I'm thinking if you're going to be putting, you talked about putting at least the statue of Ronald Reagan statue at Castaways, well, you're just compounding the problem. What we're hoping for, those of us that live in the community and walk in that beautiful park, is that we could keep that park natural, the way it was intended, in my understanding, by the city when we all worked hard to get it as a park. So I would think that the first problem was the statue that's there now, and that let's not make it worse. I was so stunned when I first saw that statue. I don't understand why our city would do this to such a beautiful and peaceful place when there's a better place for that statue. And it was, it's something that if we are going to honor Ronald Reagan, and if we are going to honor the Marines, I would think you'd want people to want something instead of wanting to be opposed to it. And so this is why I'm making the appeal to you, that there might be another spot, a better place, if you are going to have the Ronald Reagan statue, other than putting it where we already have a statue. Does that mean I'm through, or I'm almost through?
If you're almost through, you can...
I am almost through. I have some other ideas of where you could put the Ronald Reagan statue, but I will do that for you later. But I don't think it's just, our opposition to Castaways is just because it's a Ronald Reagan statue, it's because any statue added to that one that's already there that is not liked by the community, by a lot of people. I'm sure some must like it, too. I think denigrates the whole idea of honoring the person whose statue or organization whose statue that is. I would like to see you give some thought to where it goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Do we have any other comment?
I live on Cliff Drive in Newport Beach at Mr. Hill's. I live on Cliff Drive in Newport Beach in Mr. Hill's district. In the interest of transparency, I will reveal upfront that I voted for Ronald Reagan for both governor and president. I'm also a veteran. I also use Castaway Park regularly, and I'm not happy with anything that takes away from the natural beauty that exists there. And I also voted for each of you, some more than once. I'm here to suggest an alternative to the location of the statue, one that may offer a way to change the perception from politics to history, our history here in the city. Back Bay View Park is now located on the site of the famous July 1953 Boy Scout Jamboree. At the time, it was a very big deal for the city of Newport Beach and brought much media attention to our community. Thousands of people came for that event, and most brought their families with them. The Jamboree is the reason for the name of the road. Ronald Reagan was not a Boy Scout, but as governor, he was very involved with the Scouts. In his eight years in office, he served as membership roundup chairman for Project SOAR, served on the council's advisory board, and as a member of the Los Angeles Council, he served as their Scoutarama chairman. For his service to the Boy Scouts and youth, he was awarded the Silver Beaver Award. The Marines also played a significant role in the Jamboree. Marine helicopters provided coverage for the boys visiting the beach and those at the campsite to ensure safety and protect against accidents. Their presence was very impressive to all those in attendance. Mr. Curry, in comments made regarding the Reagan statue, was quoted as saying, "It's how we remember and transmit our history to future generations. This is an opportunity to provide the glue and bind together the history of all presidents in their role as commander in chief of our armed forces, together with all veterans who have served our country and some of the history of Newport Beach. While it may not be practical to move the 1-1 memorial statue and place it in the same area with the Reagan statue, it should at least be considered." In 2000 and 2008, 2007, 2008, Mr. Curry also noted and was quoted saying, "The 1-1 memorial will be visible from Pacific Coast Highway." It's not. Only the flag and a tiny bit of the memorial can be seen. If these statues were in the Back Bay Memorial Park, they would be seen regularly by every citizen and most visitors to our community. This site is also much more centrally located, and access to the statues in terms of walking distance would be nearly the same as the 1-1 memorial in its current location. This would also be a reason to actually use this part, which they do not do now. I see this as an enhanced opportunity to do exactly what Mr. Curry suggested, remember and transmit our history to future generations, including some of our own community history. I hope you will give this suggestion serious consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim Stokes, I was electronically asked to remind the mayor that he did in fair time with the John, or Airport Working Group that you did attend a meeting with the airfare group with Councilman Hill. And Keith, also, for full disclosure, your little, the system that tracks planes is also on the JWairfare.com site, so I've done my duty here. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay.
I just want to point out that there seems to be a confusion with our agenda.
There is.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Now it's time for oral reports from city council members on committee activities, and I'll start with Councilmember Hill.
None, thank you.
Councilmember Rosansky.
None, thank you.
Remember, Mayor Pro-Tam Gardner.
Yes. Councilman Selich and I attended the Marine Committee meeting of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce this morning, and the Coast Guard was featured. A very interesting presentation on both security issues and charter boats. We are now becoming a target for smuggling. It's moved up from the south. They thought they may have, we might have had seven or eight landings in the last two months, which was a surprise. So what they're trying to do is to educate the public as to what to look for and how to report it, and there is an 800 number, but you can also just call if you, for example, they said if you see a small, open boat with a whole lot of people in it, no fishing poles, you might think it was suspicious. Or if you're out on your boat at night, and there's another boat that has no running lights, first of all, it's a safety hazard, but it may also be an indication of something not quite kosher, that you could call 911 and ask the call to be transferred to the Harbor Patrol. I think that the information, Chris Miller was there, but I think this might be something we could get on the website as far as just information. And then the second part was with charter boats, that there are a lot of illegal charters, even in Newport Harbor, and again, you can report, if you suspect that, to the Coast Guard. It's a good idea to report it because it's a safety issue. Many of those aren't inspected for the things that they should have, and they will, they made the pledge that they will follow up on every complaint that they get. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes. We heard a lot this evening about the airports. I think the subject's been covered. Our Citizens Aviation Committee meets monthly, and it's part of the city's commitment to regular and constructive dialogue, and I think all the comments this evening really speak to the level of involvement and engagement and support that we have here in the community from the council and our citizen advocacy groups, as well as our attorney and manager who attended the AWG dinner. The second issue is on the city's representative to various regional planning boards, and there has been state legislation on greenhouse gases, and I'll try to distill for you how that implementation will sort of come into being as far as impacting cities such as Newport Beach. And there's really two big pieces of legislation. The first was AB 32, and that addresses greenhouse gas emissions and their reduction in California for all segments of production. So it'd be things like industrial emissions, paints and vapors, and all agricultural generation. And AB 32 is probably most known for its proposed cap and trade policy or strategy, which has not yet been implemented. Secondly is SB 375, and that's really been driven by the Senate, Daryl Steinberg, who has awesome power in the state senate, and he introduced legislation that was modeled after one of the cities in his district. And what that addresses is the overall generation of passenger cars and light trucks, light-duty trucks. And how that's going to hit the city is that the strategy is to address land use and transportation linkages to diminish the travel length of cars and trucks, thus affecting greenhouse gas emissions. So after the legislature adopts these laws, then they have a state agency, in this case, Air Resources Board, to implement it, and then it kind of trickles down from there. And so in Southern California, we are assigned certain per capita targets, and we have to reduce greenhouse gases 8% by 2020 and 13% by 2035. So in order to meet these targets, you need a plan, and that's where we sort of start to interface with this legislation. And so as it trickles down, the subregional planning unit is the county, and within the county, they have developed a plan called the Sustainable Community Strategy, or the SCS. And we're going to get the first crack at commenting on this plan when it goes to OCTA in April. Goes to OCTA, they're the transportation people in the county. And so the idea is through how we have this transportation planning and land use planning that we're going to reduce greenhouse gases, so for example, encouraging people to live along transportation corridors, so they'll be driving less and reducing greenhouse gases. So I'd like for our staff to take a look, and I think it'd be appropriate for community development and public works, to take a look at that plan, at that proposed strategy, and there's lots of formulas and assumptions, and if you can kind of ferret through that for us and help us gain an understanding of what that exactly is going to mean for Newport Beach down the line, that would be very helpful. So this SCS plan is really the first step in what is going to be a sort of a lengthy process of plans for implementing greenhouse gas legislation. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Curry?
The Finance Committee met this week, and we had the opportunity to sit down with the city's auditors. I'm very pleased to report that the city had a clean audit, that there were only relatively minor administrative recommendations, which staff is administering. Our financial reports are perennially the winners of the Government Finance Officers Association Certificates of Excellence, and that is certainly true of the current version. And so we were very pleased. Mayor Hen introduced a technique whereby the members of the committee met with the auditors without staff, so that we had the opportunity to talk with them privately and without staff present about any issues that they may have seen with the city, and I'm very pleased to report that they were identifying no deficiencies in terms of our financial management, and so I think the committee was very pleased with the results of our audit and with the reports of our auditors. Let me also say that one of the things that the Finance Committee reviewed was the restructuring of our parking administration, which will be coming to the council, I believe, on the 22nd. I think that's going to be a very exciting plan that has the potential of both reducing the city's operating costs by upwards of half a million dollars and also introducing new revenue opportunities to the city in more efficiencies in terms of how we manage parking and how we handle the cash-related parking. So look forward to that coming forward in the next two weeks, but I think that's something that flows from City Manager's KIF's good-to-great approach, and it's something I think the council is going to be very interested in seeing when it comes back to us in two weeks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Selich?
Nothing this evening.
And I have nothing. All right. On to public hearings. Agenda item number 11.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this first item is a code amendment related to setbacks in a specific area in Irvine Terrace. Jim Campbell will make the presentation, and Jay Garcia is with him. As is typical, we would have a brief staff presentation, then open a public hearing, and then close the public hearing, and then ask you to introduce an ordinance relating to this setback change. So with that, Mr. Campbell.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a setback amendment for 1537 Centinela Terrace. As you know, we have setbacks on our districting maps, so they're adopted by ordinance, and to change them on that map requires an ordinance amendment, and in this particular case, we changed it from 34 feet to 19 feet. Funding Commission did review this item and does recommend approval. We have additional exhibits we can show if the council so chooses, but it's really my presentation, and we can provide a more in-depth one if the council wants one.
All right. Thank you. So I believe the procedure is to open the public hearing on this item. And with that, then, do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Do we have any comments from council?
Move the action.
Second. All right. Any further comment? Please vote.
There's an ordinance for introduction, and it's ordinance number 2011-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving code amendment number CA 2010-010 to revise setback map number S9A Irvine Terrace to establish a 19-foot front setback for property located at 1537 Centinela Terrace, PA 2010-176. Councilmember Rosansky, if you can please. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right. On to agenda item number 12, approval of master fee schedule and change in subsidies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. You saw part of this at your last study session, where we brought to you updates to our fee schedule. We do think it's important enough to do a brief staff report for you again. Welcome your comments on that, and in some cases, we're answering some of the questions you brought up last time with the staff report. So with that, I'll ask Tracy McCray, or the Finance Director, to go through that for us.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I also wanted to point out that I handed out copies of the presentation and a summary sheet of the Police Department fees for council, and I left some for the public on the back Wanted to go over the steps in general again for the fee schedule. Our consultant, MGT, and I'm sorry, Mike Adams from MGT is to my left, and Evelyn Sen, our revenue manager, is to his left. MGT will work with the departments to update the time spent and materials needed for each service. They will also recommend possible new fees that they see in working with other agencies. Those are just recommendations, or other, new laws have come into effect since the last time they were here. They will then calculate all the fees based on the updated data with the basic principle of full cost recovery, which is the basic principle that is set out in Municipal Code 3.36. The next step, the departments will review the schedule for accuracy and reasonableness. They will also look at any proposed new fees, and they will determine if, based on Newport Beach culture and values and other of our local governments around us, does it make sense for us to charge this fee? And they will then make a recommendation to this council of any subsidies that they feel would be appropriate for potential new fees as recommended tonight. The third step is tonight. Management is now recommending to you the fees via the master fee schedule, and then council will have the ultimate decision whether to approve or disapprove. Police Department, like Harbor Resources, was picked for a full review of their fee schedule, and MGT worked with the Police Department staff for all fees. Some significant changes we wanted to bring to your attention, and I did just want to remind, not only are the Police Department fees in the fee schedule, but I have attached a summary fee schedule just for police, for the public and council. But some significant changes we wanted to address, and based on some conversations we had in February, jail booking fees, they did increase rather significantly. If council recommends our fee increase, the total annual increase to revenues in any given year is estimated at about $80,000. But the reason for this increase is as the consultant worked with our Police Department, they really looked at the number of inmates that we are required to transport to the Orange County jail facilities, and that's about 120 minutes round trip. And that, those transportation costs are eligible per California government code, but we had not been picking those up before. So the consultant made a recommendation, and the police chief agreed that we should be passing the cost of that service to those that are booked through our system. Impound fees for animals, on the contrary, decreased. So we had a pretty significant decrease in the rates as recommended to you in the schedule, and that was due to a reduced number of impounds, which allowed for less time being needed for the impound of those animals. So the cost of that went down significantly, and if approved, would be a reduction of about $42,000 to our revenues per year. And finally, the massage license fees. We discussed this in February 22nd, but the state has new licensing requirements where the massage technicians are required to go through the state. They also now prohibit cities from requiring massage technicians to get local permits. So we had traditionally, even though we had heavily subsidized these permits in the past, we're recommending today to remove those subsidies, seeing as these technicians are not required to get a city license, and they probably will not get a city license, and it has been referred to the city attorney to go ahead and remove that Municipal Code section as it no longer really applies.
To go back to the impound fees for the animals?
Yes.
You say that it's less time necessary to perform the service. Does that mean the euthanizing? Is that, we're just whipping them through there?
No, no. And let me call Police Chief Johnson. I, what, in working with the Police Department, what I was told is processing them through the shelter. We don't do the euthanization.
Right.
But there's just fewer animals, so it's taking our staff less time to get them there. But we're definitely not doing that. If I could just confirm?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you. Because we had gotten, we had one very concerned resident about that.
Right. And just for this council's knowledge, we're in the process of doing an RFP for the shelter services now. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Second slide on the Police Department fees. We had approximately six new fees as recommended when we came to you last time, and we just wanted to go over them in general with you today. The Disturbance Advisory Card, or the DAC, these are the cards that are issued by the Police Department for those problem party calls, and we currently have a Municipal Code Section 10.58 that has an administrative citation fine, significant fine, for these disturbance advisory cards. The first call, though, is a warning, so there is no fine associated with the first call. The second call is a $250 fine, and it excels from there. But we have never charged for the cost of performing that service before. So our consultant worked with PD. They did come up that the cost of that service was approximately $58, and PD did recommend that we charge that cost of service with the fine. So we won't charge the cost of service for the first call because there's no fine per the municipal code, but if they do get a second call, which is upheld by a fine of $250, the service charge for the Police Department will also be added to that fine. Now, there were three new fees because they do have a cost of service associated with them, and they were added to the fee schedule. them, and they were added to the fee schedule. But the police chief has recommended we do not charge for this fee, or other, in other words, we do subsidize 100%. And I just want to go over that a little bit. The secondhand pawn dealer tag checks. This is for those secondhand dealers, and we only have about 15 in the city. They actually bring in, I think it was called securitized, securitized jewelry, to the Police Department, that the Police Department enters this into a database, and they check it to make sure it wasn't stolen. So, these secondhand dealers are actually helping the city to track possible criminal activity, which helps our community. The actual cost of service was only about $12, so immaterial. But as the chief says, he wants to encourage compliance with this because they're actually doing us a favor. They're actually physically coming to the Police Department to have this entered. So, we, it is a cost of service, but we're recommending that this council approve that we subsidize that 100%. The next two items are registrations for sex offenders and narcotics offenders. This is a state law requirement. The state requires these offenders to register with us. There is a cost for us to do this service, but as the police chief said, we have to do this service whether they pay the fee or not. It's required by the state. And he really wants to encourage compliance with the state law. He feels it makes for a safer community. He feels that it's better for his officers to know where these people are. It's better for our community to know where they are. And so, he is also recommending that this council approve 100% subsidy, and we have it on the fee schedule, but we have a collection rate of zero if this council so approves. The last change, which was new-
Councilmember Curry, did you have a comment?
Well, I seem to recall that we actually imposed this fee as part of our 2008 fee review. So, it's been on the books, I think, for at least a couple of years. No? I think it's on the schedule.
I, no.
No?
I'm seeing shaking of heads by police. I checked 2009. It was not on there. I can check 2008 just to confirm, but I do not think that we've ever charged for this type of fee before.
It's the, it's the city's policy, both as a standalone policy and also as embodied in the fiscal sustainability plan, that we will recover fees, full cost of services, except in cases where we decide to provide a subsidy. And we're going to talk about imposing fees on people that need paramedic service, but we're going to subsidize to 100% the 50-some people who are such, who are required by state law and required by the conditions of their parole to register as a sex offender. And it seems to me that we're giving the wrong subsidy. Somebody either, A, can't afford the $200, he shouldn't live in Newport Beach, and B, if he doesn't pay it, he ought to go back to jail. But that's just my opinion, Chief.
Well, I would just say that I think that this is the right approach, because I would like them to register, and obviously, there must be a lot of motivation not to register, and add money to it is even greater. And we want to know, as parents and grandparents, where these people are, so we can be careful of those things and have our police know. And so, I think it's a good idea.
Chief?
I think you both bring up very valid points. And let me give you a little history. As Tracy mentioned, these are, these are new fees for us. They were not on the schedule before. It was asked last, the week before last, if we can charge for these, and you certainly can charge for these fees. We've confirmed that with the Office of City Attorney. However, what we did with PD is we looked at, we did a little homework and looked around at some of the agencies, not only in Orange County, but LA County and San Diego County as well. We cannot find another police agency that charges for these fees. And the main reason why is to, is because we want that compliance. It's to our advantage to know where these people are, where they live, and registering does that. On top of that, it's a, it's a requirement, a legal requirement. It's legally, legally, a legal requirement for them to register and a legal requirement for us to register them when they come to us. In other words, if we charge them a $220 fee, they come to the door and say, "I'm not paying", we have to register anyway. On top of that, there is some issues with sex registrants, where you have a registrant who lives in the city would have to register once a year, $220 a year. If it's a transient, they have to register once a month. So, we'd be charging them $220 a month to register. Transients, some homeless, sex offenders, they won't comply. I can guarantee that. And we would, particularly that group of people, we would prefer them to comply and come in and register than to be out of compliance and we not know where they are. So, those are the concerns that we had, and I share your concerns, Councilman Curry, of wanting to have them pay for this service, and we, you certainly have that option to do that. But those are the concerns that we had at PD and why we, we thought maybe we should subsidize these fees.
Well, I'd only, perhaps we need a different schedule for transients because they're in a different situation in terms of their residence. But, you know, failing to register is itself a, as I understand the law, correct me if I'm wrong, a violation of one's parole that can cause you to go back to jail. So, if that's not motivation enough to step up and register irrespective of the $200 fee, I'm not sure the 250, the absence of a $200 fee is going to compel you to go down and sign up. I mean, I just remain to be convinced of that.
Yeah, I don't know if the absence is going to compel them to sign up, but I think the presence of it could, could compel them not to sign up. I think that was, that's more of our concern. But then again, your decision, we'll do whatever you decide.
Councilmember Dale?
Chief, question for you. Megan's database, what is that tracking? Is that a duplicate of this, or is it a little bit different?
No, some sex offenders are included in that database, but not all sex offenders.
Okay, I guess I had a question. You were not able to find a single agency in Orange County or up in LA County that charges this fee?
Yeah, now, just for clarification, I didn't poll every, every agency. I looked at about eight agencies throughout the county, in three counties, actually.
What other Orange County agencies did you look at? Do you remember?
I'll have to look at my list. I think we looked at Costa Mesa, you know, Irvine, what else? Huntington Beach. Keep going, keep feeding me here. I can get you that list. I have the list. I'm holding it in my pocket.
Well, but that's, you know, I was curious about the agencies immediately adjacent to our city.
Right. Yeah, Anaheim's another one that we looked at. Long Beach, Carlsbad, on the coast.
And our consultant did just confirm that he's made the recommendations to several of his agencies, and he wasn't able to find one who actually adopted charging the fee as well.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. We're not quite done, if you're-
Oh, all right. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Okay, I will move quicker. The solicitor, the solicitor application fee is a new fee that was actually approved by council on October 26th. So, now solicitors have to go to the Police Department. They have to register and get permission to go to our community and solicit for help, support, or funds. The fee for up to 10 persons is $36. Greater than 10 persons would be $87. We do not anticipate even one or two a year. We didn't have one since this was approved, and we had, I think, about 50 since this was approved for the up to 10. There were three other departments that had changes to the fee schedule that were not under consultant review for this year, and didn't, and these were changes beyond CPI in essence of full disclosure. We just wanted to let council know what we were doing as part of that giant fee schedule you had. For community development, the Building Department has a water quality management plan review fee. It was previously one fee for both inspection and plan check. The fee was $1,030, but they would manually, for accounting purposes, transfer these to different accounts so that they could track them separately. So, in order to do that upfront, they've asked to separate the fee. Now, the inspection fee is 600, the plan check is 430. There was no change to the fee. It's exactly the same, only CPI will be adjusted. This was just for accounting purposes only. Planning, the new fees, again, council approved just in January, the operator's license fee and the appeal fee. It was approved in the Muni Code that it would be $656. And this was erroneously on my slide for February 22nd as an ABC license fee under police. Police only has a support role. This really does belong under planning within the Community Development Department, and this is the fee as approved by council per Muni Code 525. So, this is a new fee for the schedule, but council has already approved this fee. The last one was per the zoning code updates recently. A planned development permit of $162 an hour was approved. This is a new and streamlined permit application or option for applicants. And again, the department anticipates two or less a year. So, not significant, but was approved with the recent zoning code. The Fire Department, the Fire Department really did a thorough review. They hadn't been studied in several years, and we had one of the battalion chiefs go fee by fee and really look at the staff time needed to perform certain services. And there were also changes to the Health and Safety Code that had happened since their last fee study. They were almost all reductions, so if you look at the fee schedule under Fire Department, you'll see many, many reductions. And those were for fees related to high-rise buildings, places of assembly, daycare facilities, above-ground storage tanks, hospitals, and convalescent facilities. So, not only do departments increase fees occasionally, but we also do quite often reduce fees. So, I just wanted to bring that to council.
What's the new daycare fee? I remember it just caused a lot of uproar.
I have that now. One moment. Oh, my gosh, I have it hard to- The daycare facilities fee used to be $263, and now it's recommended at $123. So, a decrease of $183. And then, changes per the Health and Safety Code, medical gas permit, they put a cap. We can't charge more than $50, so we adjusted our fee schedule for that. And residential care facilities, we're now allowed to charge full cost for residential care facilities. The candle permit came up last time, so I got candle permit 101 by our Fire Department. This is actually per the California Fire Code that deals with permits required by the state fire marshal. So, these are the fees or cost of services to enforce Chapter 1 of the Fire Code. So, there's an initial candle permit or a candle permit for special events. It's $50. This is handled by a department assistant in fire. The arrangement needs to be brought in. It has to be tested. Pictures are taken of it. A stamped permit is issued. It has to be onsite with the business. If there's no changes in this arrangement, there's no need to come back. If the business wishes to use a different candle, they do have to come back. Otherwise, our fire captain will confirm that the candle permit is current and valid when he conducts his annual business inspection. So, that's for the initial permit or just a special event. The annual renewal has a fee of $140. That's for the fire captain to come outside, come onsite and perform the same inspection, make sure the permit is valid. However, there are other annual inspection fees. The business is actually only charged one fee, that being the highest. And the example Fire gave is if they have a place of assembly fee and three different Chapter 1 permits, which are these, which these candle permits fall under, the business will only be charged for a place of assembly fee because it is the highest fee. Doesn't matter how many other permits they have or how many other fees that they would normally be required to pay. They are just considered one fee, and it would be the highest at this time.
Question?
Yes. Yes.
Other than this whole topic is absurd. So, if I want to get a permit, initially, it costs me 50 bucks, and then if I want to renew it, it costs me $140, and if I change the color on my candle, I got to do it again?
Color changes don't apply. But I'll have the fire chief come up and maybe give a much more detailed explanation of what does apply for a renewal.
The color of the candle doesn't matter. It's, it's the device itself and the safety of that device. So, that's, in the initial permit, that's photographed, confirmed to be safe for the restaurer who's ever used in that candle, and then recorded. The $140 annual permit is that the station company, the engine company or truck company will go out to the restaurant, and part of their inspection is to look at the types of candles being used in the restaurants as long as the, as well as the hood systems, fire protection systems, et cetera. And then, they're charged the highest of all the permits that are required for that facility only, but not all of the permits in conjunction with one another.
So, one's cheaper because you come in, the other is more expensive because we have to go out.
And it's a fire.
And what you're really saying is not the candle, it's the method in which the candle is used?
No, it's, it's the type of device. It's no different than if you're looking at a nightclub utilizing pyrotechnic devices for a rock show. All these things are considered dangerous to life and safety of residents and visitors to our city. They need to be inspected to make sure that those people are safe in those facilities. And so, that's what we're doing. We're looking at the devices. A candle is just as likely to start a fire as a, as a bazooka, and probably more likely, actually, if they're around flammable material. So, that's what the crews do, is they go into the residences, to the businesses. They look at that business to make sure that it's a safe place for our residents and visitors to be. If they find things that are unsafe, such as a change in a lighting device within that, that business, then they report it, and it has to be changed.
Councilman Selich?
Yeah, I was at a Civic Symphony Dinner at the Island Hotel Saturday night, and I informed all the people at my table that all those candles had permits, and I'm happy to report they all felt much safer.
Councilmember Dale?
I had a question on a different fee. You know, the word absurd when Councilman Hill used that. We have still in here the going-out-of-business permit fee, and to add salt to the wounds, we also have the going-out-of-business annual renewal fee. Any, any luck? We could delete those?
What department is that with? I'm sorry.
Yours.
Administrative Services.
Yes.
Well, Evelyn Sen, let's talk about that.
It's only for those carpet dealers that always seem to be going out of business and never seem to close.
I'm not quite sure how to read this mega spreadsheet, but it's Administrative Services Revenue. It begins with Business License Initial Application. You go towards the end, and about the eighth or so down, Going-Out-of-Business Permit, Going-Out-of-Business Permit Renewal. It's pretty right here. You want me to send you the sheet now?
No, we have it.
We found it. I think your point, Councilmember Dale, actually, it's not far from Mr. Rosansky's point. There, there was, as I understand it, a, a consistent use of going-out-of-business sale, signage, in order to sell rugs. And I think at some point, the city said this needs to be regulated because it's just getting silly. It doesn't mean we couldn't take a look at that. And what we'd really do is, rather than remove it from the fee schedule, we need to remove it from the ordinance, sorry, from the code section that it applies if indeed you'd like to get rid of that regulation, and then the fee goes away.
Does that mean those businesses will finally close?
We can't, we can't afford to close.
Well, why not just have a fire sale fee?
Use those candles.
There's the candles again. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
While we're on the subject, we also have a review of special package hotel deals. What's that?
Maybe the head of visit Newport Beach could tell us.
So, that, no, that, I'm sorry, read it again?
Review of special package deals hotels, $75.
Is that for TOT? We have a TOT auditor who does analysis of various TOT revenues and then payments of those and reconciliations. So, I think that's what that is, but we can get the, we'll double-check on that for you too.
But it apparently applies only if they're, if they're discounted hotel rooms.
We can double-check that the wording is correct.
The other thing is, is just looking at this, apparently, for vending machines in an arcade, like down at the Fun Zone, if the, if the machine charge is greater than nine cents, it's a $6 fee. If it's one to nine cents, it's a $6 fee or a $3 fee. Is it half as much work to regulate the other machine? This is why people get, get concerned with government, because we have fees, you know, and then if we have a coin machine here, another one, it's $11 versus $23, where it looks like the same thing based on how much money you put in the machine.
I very much appreciate that comment, and it makes me smile, too, Mr. Curry. I would note that I think some of these fees that you're identifying are ones that we didn't look at this time around, and it sounds like we need to look at them. We looked at police, fire.
We're on track. Next week.
And, and that's coming to you next time?
Yes. Admin Services is on track to work with the consultant for this, this next go-around, which will start in a couple of weeks. And so, we will be going fee by fee, but it wasn't the intent of this year's fee schedule to go through Administrative Services.
I promise you, we'll look at the crazy ones. Well, actually, you have the entirety of the fee schedule in front of you.
Right.
Including some that haven't been touched in years.
Right. We inherited these, but I assure you, we will look item by item as we work with MGT.
It was probably on a fee schedule for years and years, just in the same way. That doesn't mean we shouldn't look at it. We will.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that your report?
Almost. Okay, Recreation and Senior Services. Okay, Recreation and Senior Services. Because of the reopening of Oasis, they created a more consistent rate, same as with Newport Coast Community Center, to provide for staff and setup costs. So those fees were changed. There were minimal increases, but it was to keep them in line with Newport Coast. They also reviewed the time and materials needed to perform services, such as after-school programs and summer camps, to make sure they were still cost-effective. We have some contracted-out services. The relocation of the sand volleyball courts, that's actually now contracted out, and I think it went from about $80 to $700. So if somebody in the community wants to do that, it's gotten more expensive, but we did contract that out. The Oasis cleaning fee and security guards are also contracted out, and they had more nominal increases for that. And then this council approved an increase to the administrative fee to cover the costs of credit card processing, and that was approved by council on June 22nd, an increase of $2. So, and finally, one of the other items we asked about to...
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
On the credit card fees, if I may. Granted, my information is years old, but when we used to allow people to pay bills in our internet company by credit card, we had to sign an affidavit with the credit card company that was illegal to charge them, that we couldn't charge a customer to use a credit card. Is that no longer valid in the credit card world today?
Just anecdotally, when I sign up for an athletic event, I always have to pay the fee to, so it must be gone. But, yeah, we can take a look at it, though.
I'm not aware of that either, just with our own credit card processing through cashiers.
With our...
Wonders of deregulation.
With our credit card processing, though, doesn't Merchant Services charge a percentage fee per transaction? So if they're charging a percentage fee per transaction, which maybe you can confirm or say no?
This was recreation-specific, so let me refer to Laura Detwiler.
Okay.
It wasn't necessarily to cover the credit card costs as much as it was to comply with CPI compliance, federally mandated requirements for security when using credit cards, but it was also to help us process all the registration for all of our programs. So it covered a multitude of items, which we've had this fee in place for years and years and years, and so it's just helping us pay for the cost of ActiveNet, which is our software that helps us manage reservations and class registration. So it's more of an administrative fee than it is really covering full cost of credit card use.
And is, so if I go in and pay my annual dues of $35, I'm charged another $5 if I do it on a credit card?
$35 for dues for, I'm not understanding the question.
I think the dues to Oasis are $35 a year.
No, it's actually when you sign up for a class or a program, that administrative fee is placed on top of it. So not necessarily your fees for Oasis membership, but if you were to take a contract program or sign up for a league after-school program, that administrative fee is placed on top of that cost of the program.
It was $3 before. No, yeah.
And so we've raised it to.
Okay.
Okay. We've pretty much covered this. Municipal Code 3.36 has a general guiding principle that the city is full-cost recovery, but we do have Exhibit A, where the council has recommended subsidies. Today, we are asking to remove subsidies for emergency transport for the residents. I believe Councilmember Curry was alluding to this before. What we found in working with the fire department is that that subsidy actually benefits the insurance companies and not our residents, which was the intent of putting the 50% subsidy on. And we also wanted to point out to council that our Medicare customers' out-of-pocket costs will not change for the change in this policy. And we are encouraging our residents to use the Fire Medic Service Fee Program. It is $48 per household. That covers everyone in the household. It also covers anybody's guests that are staying in the household with them. And businesses can also sign up for that, and it covers their customers or guests. We have about 6,000 of these permits a year, so it's a pretty popular program. But then that benefits the residents even more because they don't have to pay any copays or deductibles if they were to, you know, do the emergency transport, just as is. We are also requesting to remove subsidies for arrest, crime, and traffic collision reports. This is a nominal fee of about $10. We have traditionally, in councils way previous, had had pretty significant subsidies for those, and in working with the police chief, he feels that's a nominal cost of service, and it should be passed on to those that are getting the reports, the massage license fees we've already talked about. And then we've also talked about adding the subsidies for second high-on-dealer tag checks and the registrations. So tonight, we're asking you to approve the master fee schedule, and we are also introducing the ordinance that will amend our Municipal Code 3.36 for those subsidies we just talked about, whether removing them or adding them, as discussed. And then we found an inconsistency with Municipal Code Section 14.12 for both the water establishment and restoration fees. Those fees are approved by you in the fee schedule, but the municipal codes had not traditionally been updated with the fee schedules every year. So we're just making a request with you today to approve an amendment to that code with this fee schedule. And thank you. Now I'm hoping for any other questions you might have.
All right. Well, now we'll open the public hearing, and do we have any other comments or questions from council here? Okay. Then I'd be glad to hear questions from the public on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I had not intended on talking on this topic, but...
Could you state your name, please?
Robert Hawkins. I live in the city of Newport Beach. I am on the planning section. It's, I think about eight pages in, and on the fifth line, fifth and sixth line down, appeals to City Council and Planning Commission. There are substantial fees for both. I think we need to carve out for both appeals by planning commissioners to the Planning Commission and a carve-out for appeals by council members to the council. I don't know that there is, there are carve-outs in the code, so I believe we need to have either a footnote or some waiver of that fee noted on this fee schedule. Also, in, on the same line, although maybe for some different reasons, on the operator's license appeal, which is more than, I would say, two-thirds of the way down, a similar waiver for both appeals by the Planning Commission and by the City Council. And finally, a topic near and dear to my heart in the middle of the page, in-lu parking. The proposal is $150 fee. Now, that is not listed as per timeframe. I believe the code section was per year or per month. Obviously, that $150 is not adequate to provide any parking whatsoever. Now, if this is only to defray the costs of some service, I don't believe we collect an in-lu fee currently. I believe we should have an in-lu fee. I believe it should be substantial. The Balboa Market cost us $3.2 million for 32 parking spaces. The math is easy. That's $100,000 a space. That's just for site acquisition, not improvement. So I think that we need to look at in-lu parking, because if we continue to waive parking spaces, we're going to end up with a huge problem. Thank you.
If I could also just add, there is a waiver in the Municipal Code for the operator's license appeals if it comes from council or Planning Commission. And I might defer to Joel as far as other appeals, but I'm pretty confident that if the appeal is driven by council or Planning Commission, that fee would be waived.
Actually, Joel, before, I'd note, I'm actually glad Mr. Hawkins brought this up because I'm speaking with my, for myself and staff, I think we have some concerns that the waiver of the appeal fee is used too frequently, and maybe just to help someone avoid having to pay that fee. So whether the fee is wrong or it's too high, I mean, there's a reason there's an appeal fee there, and it should be limited to, arguably, to you folks. To, I don't know that it should stretch down to the Planning Commission level, because I think applicants just use that to try and get out of the fee, even if the commissioners may not support the merits of the act, or the merits of the application, or that they don't see an overriding policy issue. So I'd state the, our concern that that may be abused the way it's been, and we'd like to try and address it with you. Or you could tell us not to touch it.
Councilmember Selig?
I think we're probably just as guilty as...
I've never seen where that's really been abused. The timeouts on the Planning Commission, I never really saw the Planning Commissioners abusing it, and certainly not on the council. So, I mean, how many appeals a year are we talking about? Can't be that many.
Well, I'd probably like to explore that further with you if, because I, actually, I think the city attorney's office brought to my attention that when we adopted the zoning code, we may not have properly adopted the appeal procedure and process. So it's going to come back to you anyway, and maybe we could talk about it in that context.
Councilmember Gardner?
I'd like to move the action approval of the master fee schedule, as suggested, with the note that we will come back and look at the appeals at a later date.
I did have one question in motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
You included the candle permit? You included the candle permit?
I think it's a state law, isn't it? Isn't that what I heard?
It's a state law that we issue the permit, and this is, they don't tell you how much to charge. So this was the calculation of what it cost us to issue it, but it is up to this council if they want to charge that fee or not.
I'm satisfied that if we go in and do an inspection, we only make the one fee. That's fine.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, thank you. We do utilize fully-loaded fees, a fee recovery that's fully-loaded, which means we also put in the, any burdens from management. And earlier today, when we saw a snapshot of what that looks like from a police fee, I know it concerned me, and when you have a police officer, a special event, the fee had been $172 an hour, which includes management, and yet, when you take out the management, it's $74. So we have a fee of, so you look at your management load, it's $98 per hour. So my question is, when I look at the fire services, there's a comment, Page 3 of the staff report, that says that although the city fire department continues to provide high-quality services, the cost associated with these services have increased. Can you provide an explanation as to how the service, cost of these services have increased?
If I could just clarify from earlier on the police fee, that $172 fee was not calculated by existing police or MIIC. I don't know where that fee came from. Their fully-loaded rate is more than $74, but it's not even close to $172. I could get you what that fee is. But we do, the fire department was not reviewed this go-around, so the fees being used are from several years ago, and only CPI has been increased for those fees, unless they were reviewed by staff and then reduced, because the time it takes to perform the service has gone down. But the actual hourly rate that was used has not been changed for a couple of years.
It may have been in the context of the ambulance is, it's, I don't know. I'm just reading from the staff report that says that costs associated with these services have increased.
And that is, that's medical costs, health costs, and the fact of the Medicare reimbursement's not coming in. So not because of the cost of our hourly rates for our medics.
Okay. Yeah, I would just see the more that we can do, and I know the manager's been really taking a lot of initiatives with restructurings, but just the more, you know, that we can do to reduce our costs, I think is very much appreciated, because they do get directly passed to the user. So, thank you.
Councilmember Curry?
Then just to be clear, on the paramedic transportation fees, if you're one of the 6,000 people in town that pay the $48 a year for your household, basically insurance policy for paramedic transportation, you're not going to see your fees increased.
Not at all. You're not, and you're not going to get a bill for emergency transport at all.
Right. And if you're on Medicare, if you're over 65, and Medicare pays for your transportation costs, you're not going to see an impact in terms of your out-of-pocket cost.
None.
And if you are not on Medicare, and you don't pay the $48 fee, but you do have medical insurance that pays for paramedic service, and you need, in the event that you need to be transported to a hospital, the cost increase is going to be passed on to your insurance company.
It is.
Right. So while this is a fee increase, the actual people who are residents of Newport Beach who will actually pay it out of pocket is limited to those without insurance, less than 65, who don't choose to pay the $48 annual fee.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you for that cogent analysis, Councilmember Curry. Councilmember Hill, did you have any?
Councilmember Curry just covered my topic very well.
All right. Seeing no further council comments, we'll take public comment on this item. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to comment on fee schedule increases? I guess we did. Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. So, back to council, no further comment.
Mr. Mayor, since we approve all of these in one fell swoop here, you can't really segregate them out, I would just record my opposition to subsidizing the sex offender registration fee.
All right. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I need to read the one resolution and two ordinance titles. Resolution 2011-24, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending the city's master schedule of fees to be charged for user services. Ordinance 2011-10, for introduction, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Section 3.36.030 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to emergency transport resident fees, arrest reports, crime reports, traffic collision reports, vehicle repossession, and massage technician applications renewals. And ordinance number 2011-11, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Sections 14.12.085A and 14.12.125A of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to water establishment fees and water service restoration fees. With Councilmember Daigle voting no, the motion carries.
I need to discuss with the city attorney a better methodology here to make sure we get these ordinance titles read before we actually vote. Maybe we can, maybe we can read these at the inception of the agenda item, just so that we're sure we're covered that. How about that? Okay.
I have one more, so we can do that.
All right. Good. Okay, we're on to current business. And the next item is the Wayfinding Sign Project.
Mayor, Mayor members of council, as you may recall, back in August, we had a study session, and we reviewed the history and the status of the citywide directional and wayfinding sign program. And at the conclusion of that meeting, the council asked us to go back and kind of get a feel for what the costs were. So we figured the best way to do that would be to finish the plans and actually put it out to bid. And we were pleasantly surprised, as you might recall, back in August, we were thinking that the cost of the project might have been around $200,000. The low bidder, Sensors, is just a little under $100,000, and with some contingency, it puts us about, about 45% below what we thought it was going to be. This project...
Steve, was that, you talked about redesigning, maybe doing the oval shape on a square thing, or is this the original ones that we...
This is the original sign, and there's 65 of them, and they're all over the city. And I apologize for our location map. We are now going to standardize our location maps from now, this point forward, so you'll be able to understand where they are. But they're all over the city, and there's 65 of them. The funding for this, we were fortunate in working with the Visit Newport Beach and the Marine Avenue bid, and the Balboa Village bid, and the Corona del Mar bid. They managed to come up with 60,000, a little over $60,000 of contribution from their funds, the bid funds and the TOT monies that they have, that we've given them, we're promoting the city. So what we managed to do was to find the balance of that funding through the general fund savings that we've had in various projects. So this project's coming to you with, using some of that savings along with some contribution funds. So at this point in time, you can decide to either award this bid and move forward with the project, or give us instructions otherwise. I'm hoping for any questions, if you have any.
All right. Comments, questions from council members?
I would just congratulate staff for bringing the cost of this way down from what was the original estimate back in August.
Economy sometimes helps.
Councilmember Hill?
I would move the item.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Selig. Further conversation here at the dais, and without that...
Excuse me. You know, originally, I guess I was a supporter of these signs, but quite frankly, I've looked at them for, what, a couple of years now? I think they're ugly. I think they're ugly, and I think you can't read them, and I'm going to vote against this. I support the goal of the signs. I mean, we have a lot of people from out of town come in and travel about town and try to find these landmarks that are being pointed out on the signs, but I think they add nothing to our community, and I'd be sorry to see them all, 65 of them, go up around town.
Thank you. I thought I was the only one that felt that way. I think they look cheap, and I always have, and they are hard to read. I support the idea of the signs. I think it's great that we've had the support from the visitors. I know, it's Visit Newport, I didn't want to call it the old name. And the bids. But, and when we, this came up a couple of months ago, we said, oh, we don't want to start over again. In fact, that was you, wasn't it? Maybe. But, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how everyone else feels, but I just, they just don't say Newport Beach to me. I see Tim agreeing. I see Tim agreeing. Good.
All right, Councilmember Daigle?
Well, I suppose we open public hearing, but I'd be interested in what Visit Newport, what their view of the sign is.
Well, I'm about ready to ask for public comment, so can we have public comment on this agenda item?
I will, Mayor. Members of the City Council, I'm Gary Sherwin with Visit Newport Beach. I know you've been discussing this issue for the better part of a decade, so I didn't want to prolong this pain with you any further. You know, I know that these designs have been taking place for a long, long period of time, longer than my tenure here, so I really can't comment on that. I will tell you that I think that the purpose of the signs are very important to us as a destination. Is, if you've ever arrived at LAX and imagine yourself being an international visitor to Southern California, I really pity so many of these folks, because we are not a very visitor-friendly part of the United States. I think a lot of people come, they have to navigate our freeways, we don't have mass transportation. And I think any way that we can help our visitors navigate more parts of this community and to see more parts, and thus hopefully spend more money by spending more time here, I think is very important. You know, in terms of the aesthetics of the signs themselves, I was really focusing on the functionality of it. And I know the color schemes and the reflection of the light and how they appear is probably open for a lot of subjective comments. But I do believe that the overall purpose of the signs will really help us market this city to be a much more visitor-friendly experience. And we would certainly like to be able to kind of move this along, because again, you have been talking about it for such a long time. And I know they've gone into design and redesign and design again. And if there's a way to address both of your concerns and hopefully not slow this process up, we would certainly be open to it. As you know, we've contributed $50,000 to this. It is not our policy usually to invest in infrastructure. Our belief is, you build it, we'll sell it. But this really is, in our view, something that we think is going to aid our competitiveness as a destination. And if by visitors having an easier time navigating this community, we think we're going to also be able to enhance our marketability and thus enhance the visitor's spend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Robert Hawkins. This project does have a lot of hair on it. It's been, as Mr. Sherwin said, here 10 years. There was economic development staff before the last staff that we've had that developed this project. But what is important and missing from the staff report is that the Economic Development Committee really led the charge on this. Now, Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Rozansky may think, well, okay, we've heard enough of those guys. But this thing came to the EDC a year and a half ago, and the proposal was buy the bids. The bids wanted to break things out and put up some wayfinding signs on their own that was consistent with the project. The EDC decided not to do that, moved the entire thing with a recommendation to the council, and this is where we are. So this is another function by EDC, and we'll talk about that at the next agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comment? Okay, back to council. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I suppose if we gave it another 10 years, they could be more attractive. But, you know, I really appreciate the comments from the business community, which is that they serve the function of wayfinding, you know, which leads to people finding places here in Newport Beach and going to our establishments and so on. So, thank you for your comments.
Did you want to move the item, or?
We'll move the item as recommended, I stand.
All right. Any other?
I would just, I guess, it doesn't look like it's going to go the way I'd like this thing to go, which is out the door. But, you know, we're moving into an age of everybody's got a GPS. I see wayfinding signs as really a buggy whip, basically. And, you know, I'm not against wayfinding signs. I mean, I'm a tourist, I like signs where I want to go places to find out where I'm going. But I just don't see those signs as fulfilling the function that we intended. They're very hard to read. I'm a resident here, and I have trouble deciphering what the sign says myself and understanding exactly what it means or says. So, you know, it's great to be supportive, and I am always supportive of the bids and Visit Newport Beach, because they do fulfill functions of importance here in town. But I just think we're missing the mark on this.
All right, well, I'd just add my own comment that in view of the support of this for Visit Newport Beach and the bids and the business community apparently, and I'm pretty sure the Chamber of Commerce is in favor of moving forward with this too, I'm going to support it. We seem to have been able to acquire, design, and build a $130 million civic center project in one-fifth the time that's able to us to decide on this wayfinding side program. So I'm happy to support it. If there are no other comments. Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Hill?
I would just make the comment that I was surprised when I first saw the signs go up on the peninsula, probably now three or four years, five years ago. And I thought, you know, we can debate the design till the cows come home. I guess we have, as a matter of fact. And my only criticism of them is that the bands that hold them on the towers need to be extremely tight or they sag. But I think they've been helpful to help me get to work every morning. And I have a good--
Wait, they're not in Braille?
I have a good optometrist that I can recommend to you, and they have my support.
All right. With that, let's vote.
With councilmembers Rozansky and Mayor Protem Gardner voting no, the motion carries.
All right. We are on to agenda item number 14, the Thailand's consultant lease document and lease negotiations.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is an item I just wanted to bring to your attention. Arguably, it could have been something on the consent calendar, but I think it's important that you folks as a council are directing staff to move forward with the next phase of the Thailand's fee evaluation effort, which includes a lot of the commercial properties. This is the consultant that has expertise in that, to do that work. We did an RFP. It was qualification-based selection, and the ultimate interview was affirmed that Mr. Cotton's firm is probably the best one for us, so that's the proposal before you.
Councilmember Gardner?
I'm going to anticipate Mr. Mosher perhaps, if he's going to comment on this or not. But I would appreciate, I mean, I have absolute confidence and will vote to support this in the council members who did the interview. But it's always helpful to have a CV, some kind of, usually they have their references or their brief biography that they send in. It'd be nice to have that when we look at these.
I'll just add that I did sit in on, I guess, the final interview of the consultant, and they do seem like they're very well qualified, and I think they're going to be an asset to our negotiations in the future.
Councilmember Daigle?
I did have a question. What are the fees that are kind of on the table as far as what would be appraised and assessed? Appraised, I guess is probably a better word? And look at renegotiating and new fees?
Generally, the scope of this firm's services primarily involves the commercial activities that are today on an annual permit, with the goal being to move them to a lease, a longer-term lease arrangement. We have, so there's, that's probably about 80% of our commercial activities on the water. The rest, such as the Bay Club, the Balboa Yacht Club, the Bahia Corinthian are all on leases. So it would, the goal is to move those others from permits to leases.
Thank you.
Further comments from council?
I'll move the item as well.
All right, council. All right. We do need public comment here. Does anyone wish to comment on this agenda item?
I am, Mr. Mosher, and I did want to comment extremely briefly on this, but not for that reason. The report says Thailand's are properties held in a public trust. And some years ago, the voters unwisely, I believe, removed the time limit on the leases for Thailand property. And I know very little about what this issue is, but I see in the abstract and I hear the words here, it's moving from annual permits to leases. And evidently, those are long-term leases. I just, it doesn't seem to me like that's the direction the city should be going in with property held in a public trust. Thank you.
Just note, they're not necessarily long-term leases. They could be short-term with options or otherwise. That's not the intent necessarily.
And in addition, our code requires us to make this move pursuant to its existing provisions.
Okay, any other comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, any further comment from council? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, on to supplemental agenda item number 15. Would you care to read the title of that?
I would be happy to. The title for the resolution is Resolution Number 2011-26, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach relating to certain committees and commissions. And item S15 is relating to committees and commission and their link to the council's 2011 goals, committee terms, appointments to committees, and designees to JWA settlement goal discussions.
Okay, in introducing this item, I did have some conversation with the city manager and had made some suggestions that he incorporated in a red line of this item. And so, Dave, did you want to cover that for us for a moment, just so that we have that background for our discussion here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, you have a red line in front of you. I'll try to scroll through it here. So no changes to the first page, but there is a recommended change to the second page, and that would be that in accordance with your goals, that you direct that the finance committee shall be the place where Goals Five and Four are assigned. That's pension reform and city restructuring, so that's a proposed addition. Minor typo, correction there. And then now I'm in the, this is the hand, the material that goes in your boards, committees, and commission handbook that's attached to the resolution when it's adopted. And I'm focusing on the committee on Thailand's management. And I'm proposing that you take out any reference to fee activity within that committee. And that the reference instead, that the fee duties go back to the ad hoc committee on harbor charges whose sunset is changed to December 31st of this year. So in other words, the Thailand's management would not address fee issues, Thailand's management committee, but those would remain and rest with the current ad hoc committee on harbor fees and charges. And those are the proposed changes.
Okay. Dave, did you want to, in addition to that, provide any further staff report in introducing this item?
I probably should, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an opportunity for you to follow up on a discussion you had last week about the roles of committees and commissions and their link to the 2010 goals. The intent of this is to really focus your efforts and the volunteers' efforts, the citizens that dedicate a lot of their time to the city and to the community, and focus them within a couple of different avenues, including the revitalization committee and its citizens advisory panel, and including Thailand's and its citizens advisory panel. And it also speaks to sunsetting the terms of several other committees that are mostly council ad hoc committees. In fact, one of them, the city hall site committee, has already been sunsetted. And I'm just noting that that occurred on February 28th. The, this would also sunset the ad hoc committee on Marina Park Design, because that really is in the implementation phase. It would sunset the ad hoc committee on bay issues. It would sunset the media and communication committee and the borders committees. It would also take a different look at EQAC and recommend that EQAC have changes that limit EQAC to a committee that meets as needed, instead of meets monthly, so, or meets at the call of the chair, when referred something, when something is referred to it by the council. That certainly means that a member of the EQAC could come before you in any public setting and say, you know what, I really think EQAC should be looking at X, say, a smoking ban or a plastic garbage bag ban. You could decide then, yes, you as a council would like EQAC to look at that. That's a perfectly acceptable way of having EQAC look at something. And then it also talks about EDC, and the recommendation is that the membership of EDC, those that are interested and those that are selected by you folks, become more involved in the revitalization and the Thailand's committee, and that EDC in effect be sunsetted. I'm not, I'm not saying it should go away forever, but I think we're looking at our economic development function completely differently. We'd like a chance to work with the council and propose a different model, a model that may be more in tune with the times, with specifically what this community needs in terms of economic development. And there may be a role for a citizens advisory committee at that time, but we'd like to have you look at it at that time. And with that, the staff report also mentions a couple of other things. We had a little dialogue last time about the arts commission. The harbor commission, as Mayor Protem Gardner knows, will be looking a little bit more at its duties tomorrow, sorry, on Wednesday, tomorrow night. So with that, I'd welcome your comments and questions.
Okay. Councilmember, I thought you were reaching for your. Any comments from council? All right, I did have one or two comments, actually. With regard to EQAC, there was mentioned in the report about EQAC currently being involved with commenting on EIRs. And that its original mission actually started out commenting, to the extent of environmental work that it did, commenting on notices of preparation. And so it seems to me that it's probably appropriate that if we're going to continue EQAC on a sort of an on-demand basis, that we include in their purview commenting on notices of preparation to sort of return them to their original, originally intended mission.
Clarification. Just NOPs or both those and EIRs?
Just NOPs. And then with regard to the water taxi subcommittee item that was commented on here, I see that falling within the purview of the Thailand's management committee to the extent that it wishes to take up that activity or that issue, and perhaps even asking for some additional support from the harbor commission on that. So I don't see that necessarily as something that just goes away. I see another home for it in Thailand's management. And with that, those are the only additional comments that I had. Yes, those are the only additional comments that I had. So if there are no, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Hill?
Maybe I would pick up on the water taxi. That might also well be a comment, a discussion of the Mariners Mile Group as well, as they deal with the revitalization thoughts in that particular area. I guess the general comment or comments that I would like to make relate to criticism that I think we've heard, that this sounds like some kind of a method of limiting public input into our processes. And I guess I take this as just the opposite. I think that, I obviously have been a tremendous supporter of EDC. I was involved in establishing the EDC in the 90s. And I think the EDC has formed, has performed a significant function for the city over time. I think that we're in a different environment at this point in time. We're in an environment of limited resources as far as funds are concerned. We're in an environment of limited resources as far as time is concerned, time of the staff, time of the council, and time of the public. And I think that with that, and with the paradigm shifts that we're making in the staffing of the city, that it is tremendously important and tremendously appropriate to look at reorganization of our committees that maximizes those limited resources to achieve the maximum amount of benefit for the community. And with that, dealing with specific tasks, I think, is the appropriate way to go. And I envision the revitalization committee being one that has several citizen advisory panels, one in particular to each area that they are-- one in particular to each area that they are addressing. And with that group of six to eight people, let's say, I see that then being augmented further by the HOAs, the bids, the stakeholders of the local groups. And that they work together as a team on an agenda through a public meeting process that takes them to the goals and the desires under the direction of the council. I just feel that that's a tremendously appropriate way to operate. And I believe that it will involve many people and that I would hope that those individuals that have been members of EDC, of EQUAC, of Harbor Commission would all be applying to be members of these various Citizen Advisory Panels.
You know, I'd agree with that comment. And especially the Revitalization Committee, I see as a broadening of public input opportunity, but in the most meaningful way. And I'm anxious to hear staff's views coming back as it relates to Economic Development Committee with a new view of how we more effectively fulfill that role within the community. I think there are real opportunities. We have some very capable organizations already in existence that do very meaningful things already, like the Chamber of Commerce and Visit Newport Beach. And there may be ways to, you know, enlarge or enhance those roles that will very effectively promote the economic welfare of our community. So, Councilmember Daigle, did you have a comment?
Yes, I had a comment about a couple of committees. On the Costa Mesa Newport Beach Borders Committee, it states no issues. And it seems as if there are, in fact, some significant policy issues that need to be addressed by the full council or within a context of a working committee. Specifically, the regionalization of any services, which hit upon the council's priority of restructuring, as well as any potential fiscal burden. So, it seems to me that before we consider, you know, kind of propagating any service model to other cities or some refined model, that we would look to have some policy direction on that issue.
Dave, did you want to comment?
My intent, at least through this, would be that that would be something the Finance Committee would work on. And obviously, those are very substantial substantive changes in the city's organization and services and that arguably, the full council should be very involved in that whole discussion from the ground up, but at least starting with the Finance Committee.
Okay, that's good, thank you. And then, secondly, with the EQUAC, the only concern there that, you know, somehow we send the message that, you know, we really don't sort of want your assistance, but from time to time, you know, we may need you for, you know, political expediency if we kind of want to whip up support for a particular issue. And I think that concerns me where we either have the committee or we don't have the committee, but sort of a halfway measure. I don't know if that really sends the right message. That's just my view about it.
Okay. I guess my own experience sitting on EQUAC is that they've actually done a pretty good job working on individual project directives, like the leaf ban, leaf blowers, and smoking and so forth. So, I would hope that people wouldn't draw that conclusion from this avenue that we're pursuing. Councilmember Curry?
Well, I would just echo those remarks. I think we've got outstanding leadership on both EQUAC and on EDC. And I echo Councilmember Hill's comments, that I see this as an opportunity for those people to move into more specific areas as we change the committee structure. And also for EQUAC to play more, sort of on point role on specific issues that come to the city council and to take the economic development function and to really incorporate it into some of these functional committees like Tidlands and Revitalization to be more effective.
Okay, can we have comment from the public then on this item? Anyone wishing to comment, please come down.
I note, as the folks come up, I did get an email later this evening from Arlene Greer, the Chairwoman of EQUAC. And she was, I think, generally quite supportive of the concept of meets as needed with a more focused direction given to her. And I passed that, I think I passed that along to you, but hopefully characterizing her comments correctly.
Okay, public comment?
Tim Stokes, I'm still in favor of the idea of, as a member of EQUAC, of meeting on an as-needed basis. I feel, as there are other opportunities within the other committees, that we'll take these opportunities to go onto those other committees as well. I think it's just, it's doing the right thing and giving, I think, the city manager his due to go from good to great and really has, I think, the last comments, "We're going to do this, and if it's wrong, it can always be fixed and stuff." So, I think Mayor Hen, you have the right attitude about this, that let's do something and we can always come back and fix it if it just happens not to be the right answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert Hawkins, I live in the city of Newport Beach. I was the Chair of EQUAC and currently serve on EDC and its Business License Subcommittee. To the merits of some of the things that have been said tonight, the Business License Subcommittee really does find itself orphaned in this whole... It certainly isn't a Tidlands issue. It's not really a neighborhood revitalization issue. So, that Subcommittee, which has done quite a bit of work, is orphaned in this whole process. Secondly, with respect to EQUAC in terms of a specific direction as needed, I would request that the resolution be modified or you specifically provide direction tonight that EQUAC review and comment on the Environmental Impact Report for the Banning Ranch Development, which will come out soon, though we don't know when. Third, I believe your K... There's going to be a whole host of policies that are going to have to be changed, including K-10, because K-10 references, EDC is providing a functional role there. And I'm sorry to be bouncing around, but there's a whole bunch of topics to address. In terms of, there is a concern in the staff report that EDC makes it difficult for the city in legal proceedings because EDC is a city committee commenting on environmental documents for the city. However, sorry, EQUAC, thank you, Councilmember Hill. You were a founder of EQUAC as well, I believe, right? No? Okay. EQUAC, in their comments, addresses issues for which there are holes. And then staff, given the time, addresses those with responses to comments so that the holes in the environmental impact reports, to the extent there are any, become filled. That is a benefit to the city. That is not a detriment to the city. And ultimately, if you have some late comments that come in on the day of the hearing, hopefully, they've been addressed by the EQUAC comments and responses to those, which come in in a more timely fashion. And then, I guess finally, I'm sure I'm running out of time. On your City Council Goal Number Five, Restructuring, one of the implementation steps is to assist the city manager involving the community for transparency. Well, if we look at the resolutions for each of these committees, a question arises. Now, I believe that each one of these are standing committees under the Brown Act. And therefore, would the committee itself, not the committee and the advisory panel, but the committee itself, the three council members that are appointed to each of these Tidlands and Revitalization Committees, would be Brown Act committees similar to the Finance Committee. So, they'd have notice hearings and so on, notice meetings and so on and so forth. However, if you look at, and bear with me here. If you look at handwritten page 12 on this staff report, which is the resolution on the Revitalization Committee, "Meetings of the committee that involve the Citizens Advisory Panel shall be noticed, open to the public," and so on. Well, that sort of cuts out, well, does the committee have to do that or not? And I think without some clarification here, the answer may be no. Now, I realize that talking about the Brown Act and so forth may be tiresome, but I think we need to focus on the transparency issue here. The same thing applies to the Tidlands Management on page 15, written page 15, paragraph F. So, I would encourage you to have a specific statement that each one of these task force, the meetings of the committees, that is, of the three council members, has to be a Brown Act meeting. Now, I think there is also a problem with having three of anybody because EQUAC and the EDC have, well, EDC has two. Strike that comment. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, Councilmember.
Yeah, just a question, looking at what he said as far as what was the thinking behind the way that was structured?
It was the intent that generally, the larger group always meet in public with an agenda and a really collaborative approach. But it was also the intent that if the three members needed to confer about a strategy or an issue, that they'd be able to do so in private.
The issue of whether or not these committees are Brown Act committees falls under a question under the Brown Act as to whether they're designated as what the Brown Act calls a legislative body. You, of course, are a legislative body. Subcommittees of the council made up solely of less than a quorum of the council that do not have ongoing jurisdiction are not Brown Act legislative bodies. These three, these newly created committees would not, in my opinion, be a Brown Act legislative body because they are essentially ad hoc for advisory purposes only, do not have continuing jurisdiction, they're made up of less than a quorum of council, and they do not have other members on the body of the committee itself. So, that means that under the current way it's drafted, it's not a legislative body under the Brown Act and thus, the three members do not have to fully comply with the Brown Act.
Okay. Do we have Councilmember Daigle?
But given that transparency can sometimes be above the law, it's not necessary, we don't necessarily have to exclude the public.
Right, I don't think that the committees necessarily are talking about excluding the public, per se. It's more to give flexibility. Just because they're not required doesn't mean they can't act in public. It's just they're not legislative bodies pursuant to the Brown Act and required to act fully in public. But I think the goal is to make sure that they're open and transparent, particularly in dealing with the advisory boards that they work with.
Okay. Further public comment?
Mayor Hen and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In my view, this proposal does not represent disciplined thought and disciplined action. And I, too, share the concern that the entire proposal seems to be one intended to stifle citizen input. I was concerned about the two new committees specifically seem to be set up to circumvent the Brown Act with the public members not being full public members and not chosen in the traditional fashion of making applications and being confirmed by the whole council. Part of disciplined action is getting the details right. I don't think the details are right here. I don't understand why the Media and Communications Committee is in the crosshairs of the city manager's shotgun. Communication has always been considered a high priority or been stated to be. And the Media and Communications Committee has continuing roles, an annual review of the communication plan and budget of the city, reviewing the content of the website and what's on the Newport Beach TV, many other functions that have, by their very nature, are ongoing functions. And they are not being passed on to any new committee that's being created. Seems to me be a problem. The Aviation Committee has been singled out in this with three new appointments. When you, whatever action it is you're voting on, will be confirming those, I suppose. It's understood, I assume by you, that three other appointments were made in January. And the committee has met twice with those new members. And if you look at the Enabling Resolution, speaking of getting the details right for the Aviation Committee, it's only supposed to have two council members on it, not three. So, twice you've been appointing or confirming three members to a committee that only is supposed to have two council members on it. And also, if you look at the Enabling Resolution, speaking of not getting the details right, it primarily, function of that committee, according to its own charter at the moment, is to be advising you on reuse of the El Toro Marine Base, which I think is somewhat of a stale issue at this point. I don't want to bother you with more details that are not right, but if you pass this as it has been presented to, if you look on page 18 of the revised EQUAC Purpose and Responsible Vs., if you look at Item Small B, I think you will find it's been revised to where it's unintelligible what it means. That's probably about enough. Thank you.
Further public comment? Okay, seeing none, I want to bring it back to council. And before I make any further comments, I would like to address this issue regarding the Aviation Committee mission and council member makeup. Do we have any documentation here that we can refer to?
What we would do is bring back the documentation associated with the Aviation Committee if you choose to make these appointments and go ahead and identify the possibility of three council members because it's a fairly unique time in the city's negotiation process. And I think at least three of your council members should be involved in the negotiations of the settlement agreement. And now probably is the time to expand the membership on aviation. And so, note that. And it's, I don't know that we'll ever give up on El Toro, but... That's, I'd just bring back the founding document for the Aviation Committee and change that.
Okay, well, let me see if I can sort of summarize things for a moment here. It was the intention with this committee reorganization to line up the council's committee work in a way that matches up with the identified goals that council established a few weeks ago in the goal-setting session. So, with regard to the Aviation Committee, that's one of the principal goals that was established. We will certainly want the Aviation Committee to be heavily involved as it relates to the extension of the John Wayne Airport Agreement. And if it is in fact true that the mission and makeup of the Aviation Committee is a bit in doubt, I would defer the appointment process for Aviation Committee until the next council meeting, when we can do that in the context of a revision to the mission and purpose of the Aviation Committee. And it seems like that's a rather simple agenda item that we can take care of at that time. Would that make sense to you, Dave? Councilmembers? Okay, all right. Apart from the Aviation Committee, we have four other committees that are now importantly involved with council goals. We've got a proposal for a Tidlands Management Group, a proposal for a Revitalization Committee, a Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, and the designation of the Finance Committee to have purview for the two other remaining major goals, which are retirement, cost containment, and staff reorganization and the Good to Great Initiative. And so, I think we've got things lined up appropriately. And what I would like to do now is to suggest the appointments or to state the appointments for those committees such that as we vote on these items, we have those blanks filled in. With regard to the Revitalization Committee, I would appoint Councilmember Hill and Councilmember Selich and myself as chairman. And with regard to Tidlands, I would appoint Councilmember Mayor Protem Gardner and Councilmember Selich and myself as chairman. When we do get to the point of the Aviation Committee appointments, I am hopeful that we'll be able to conclude that there will be three council members. And I would expect at that time to nominate Councilmember Daigle as continuing as chairman and Councilmember Hill continuing as vice chairman and asking Councilmember Curry to fill in for Councilmember Selich on that committee. So, those would be the three, the changes in the committee makeup that I see. I do also, though, see a special role for Councilmember Daigle, who has been very much involved in bay issues, especially issues relating to dredging and environmental work in the back bay as it relates to lobbying efforts in Washington and with the Army Corps and elsewhere. And I hope with council consent that Leslie would then be able to continue in that role on an as-needed basis. on an as-needed basis, although not being a member of the Tidlands Committee. I think that'll enable us to take good advantage at the behest of council as a whole on those issues. And so, Leslie, I presume that's all right with you, and?
It'll be fine, thank you.
All right. And absent any objection from the remainder of council, I would like us to proceed on that basis. And so with those appointments, I would move the recommended items, including the redline version of the resolution that was covered by City Manager Kiff. And also, on the basis that EQUAC would be changed to be on an on-demand basis as opposed to a standing committee, and that the Economic Development Committee be sunsetted, with the understanding that staff will be coming back with proposals to fill that gap appropriately. I do think there are a couple of items that we need to comment on. I had suggested that EQUAC be, their role be changed to NOP versus commenting on notices of preparation versus Environmental Impact Reports. And there was a question raised about whether the EQUAC organization should comment on Banning Ranch before officially being sunsetted. So I would move the items as I've described, and then invite comment on those two additional items.
Well, I think as far as, okay, as Banning Ranch is concerned, I don't know why we would call that out specifically. It's something, if we make this change to EQUAC, it's at our behest, and if we decide that we want them to review Banning Ranch, we'll simply make that request. It seems simple enough.
Other comments? Okay. Well, seeing no further discussion, shall we vote on the motion?
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Well, that is the final item of business for the evening, and it's now time for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.